Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November 24th, 2025, meeting of the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee. I am Councilmember Dustin Hillis, Vice Chair of the Committee. And joining my colleagues to my right, Councilmember Byron Amos. To my immediate left, Councilmember Norwood, followed by Councilmember Collins. And we do constitute a quorum. I'll make a motion to adopt the agendas. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
Four yays, zero nays. We've adopted the agenda. I'll now make a motion to approve the meetings of the prior meetings. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lewis. Welcome, Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. One moment. Can you repeat the motion during the second, or please?
I was the motioner. Councilmember Lewis was the second.
Thank you. Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Five yays, zero nays. Minutes are approved. We'll now move on to public comment. First up, we have Ms. Henri Jordan.
Came now through the spirit of God, everyone that's here. Verily, verily, I say unto you, he that believeth on me, the works that I do shall he do also, and greater works than these shall he do, because I go unto my Father. St. John 14, Chapter 12, verse. Greater works, greater in quantity, certainly not quality. His followers were going to reach the limits of the world. Jesus created billions of dollars through me. Might be a children for his glory, for your protection, and the use of the homeless calling on Jesus. And he said, I have been very jealous for the Lord God of his hosts. For the children of Israel have forsaken thy covenant, thrown down thy altars, and slain thy prophets with the sword. And I, even I, only am left, and they seek my life to take it away. 1 Kings 19, Chapter 10, verse. This deals with national and not individual destiny. And it's a strong argument to show that God has not terminated his program for Israel. We need Jesus' help. I know I do. We're compensated to no man evil for evil. Provide things honest in the sight of all men. Romans 12, Chapter 17, verse. Repay have regard for good things. Christ told me to fight for your protection. And when the kings asked the woman, she told him. So the king appointed unto her a certain officer, saying, and so are all that was hers, and all the fruits of the field, since the day that she left the land, even until now. 2 Kings 8, Chapter 6, verse. How often the Lord weaves together the little threads of the believer's life for God's glory and the believer's good. Jesus gave us gifts to help us and others. God, I saw in a vision where China sent a bomber jet toward the property Christ had given me. And so I searched to search the properties, searched to purchase the properties. And when he seen it, it went straight back to them, not because of my power, but because of Jesus Christ's power. And he wanted for everyone. So if anyone missed out, it was their fault, because Christ gave us a chance for life. Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Jelisa Anderson. It appears you've been allocated someone else's time, so you'll have a total of six minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to just give a thank you letter. I want to read off my thank you letter today to everyone that helped me out and what's been going on. I come before you today to acknowledge those who helped as I went through this unfair treatment. After being wrongfully terminated for childbirth and being the whistleblower last year, being labeled as a troublemaker for speaking up from weak-minded officer who was in celebration of my wrongful termination, Officer James Jones, Derek Tumer, and Michael Dixon, being approached aggressively by a city deputy commissioner of employee experience, Kimberly Finley, for mentioning her name on TV, which she would never get the opportunity to do again, receiving dismissive emails from the city chief operating officer Burtz, showing no concerns or care of the situation, who is very arrogant, treats situation as if it's beneath her, not only her, but her assistant too, to those who blankly ignore every letter I deliver, didn't have the decency to even write back or acknowledge this matter through their team, failing to even show one ounce of concern, says a lot about their character and how they don't stand on their word when it comes to employees with the seat of Atlanta. Shame on you. I've heard the saying for years, blacks don't know how to act when they are in a certain position. And those who have some type of involvement in this situation have proven the saying to be true. But I will give a huge honor and thank you to those of the city council board who spoke out on this matter. A special thank you to Antonio Lewis and Andrea Boone for listening, speaking up, and speaking out. Councilman Boone, thank you for acknowledging other wrongdoings and not being oblivious to their wrongdoings. Councilman Lewis, thank you for helping. Thank you for the encouraging words, keeping me going, and thank you for showing that there is still good in people. Thank you to my peers of municipal court who have looked out for me when they didn't have to. And last but not least, thank you to DCOO Jason Ingram and Ms. Ava Truitt. As of October 2025, I am eligible to return back to the seat of Atlanta if I choose to do so. And to Officer James Jones and Deandre Moore, the decision to make sure that I couldn't return back did not stick. Thank you, Mr. Ingram, for being unbiased. Thank you for taking a timeout to listen. Thank you for the small talks, the encouraging words, and follow-up emails. What you've done and how you have handled this situation shows, to me, there is some good in humanity. The amount of time and effort and the support Jason Ingram has put in this situation, I will always be grateful for, and I would never forget. Thank you for not being dismissive. Thank you for putting yourself in my shoes. Thank you for staying humble. Your care and support has gone a long way. Mr. Ingram took the timeout of his busy schedule, stepped in place of his HR commissioner, and made sure this matter was handled properly and fairly. And to those who are in position of authority and have scared employees to not have a voice or the right to speak up, I, Jelisa Anderson, have showed y'all something different. As in the words of the Honorable John Lewis, "Never ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble." To those that have been tuning in on this situation, please don't be afraid to speak up. Try city council, research your department, who they fall under. Come out and speak out, file your complaints, file your grievances, contact ethics if you feel you've been retaliated on, harassed, discriminated against, wrongfully suspended, or terminated. But please know, the policy does not apply to everyone. It only applies to those in an entry-level position. If positive procedures apply to everyone, those at municipal court who are in violation of company policy will not still be employed. To those that are listening, take heed of this situation. I'm a prime example and the result of retaliation. I have nothing in my personnel files, no assure of mine have gotten me to this point. My intelligence is a threat to others. Also, thank you to the city inspector general for taking on this matter and is now investigating everyone involved. Thank you to my parents for the love, support, positive words, and always looking out for me. My mom, who is more worked up than me about this situation, has been by my side every step of the way, and that's her in the back. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, next. And I'll just say thank you. Next up is Nikki Bugs. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. No, good afternoon. Thank you. All right, so at the Landmark condominium downtown in your backyard, we have suffered severe and continue to suffer severe life-threatening issues and safety overlooked by a city. Again, this will be a common conversation that we'll have and a common statement that I'll consistently make. Near fatal shooting, so we had near fatal fire January 17th, of which still is sitting in limbo. We're on the hook for a federal lawsuit now because of insurance regarding that. And the homeowners are on the hook for shootings, stabbings in the building, an individual expelled from the 15th floor window, deaths, additional reprehensible actions that have taken place in the building. What is it that I can do or we can do at the Landmark to help you come up with an ordinance or some type of plan of action to overlook or help the building? Mr. Amos, Mr. Hillis, Ms. Collins, Mr. Lewis? Nothing? So nothing to say. And that's unfortunate, because I've been coming to you guys for a lengthy amount of time. I know there's a limited amount of things that you can do, but there are people that you may know that can assist us. At this point, we're living in a motel. We're homeowners, and we're now living in a building with just in-and-out riffraff. What else can we possibly do to help you help us? When our taxes are due, then we're expected to pay them. If we don't pay them, then we're getting warning signs, warning notices, threats. If there's something that we can do to help expedite an ordinance or help write an ordinance or something, please let us know. Something has to happen. And I'm done.
Councilmember Lewis?
I want to say thank you so much for coming down here today. I wish you weren't, you didn't have to come down here for the issue you're coming down for.
Thank you.
I've tried to always respect district politics.
Sure.
And the district that you live in is Councilmember Bakhtiari's district.
Yeah.
And the at-large member would then be Councilmember Matt Westmoreland. And so those would be the, as you see the person who came up right before you, you're in my area, I'd jump off the bridge for you.
Thank you.
When you're in anything in my area, I'd make sure I respect district politics. So the lead would be your district councilperson, then your at-large councilperson. I was thinking about how this Arabic short-term rentals. So you could actually look at my votes. When Councilmember Amos's legislation came forward, I voted for his. When Councilmember Shook's legislation came forward, I voted for his. That was me trying to be specific to district politics. Anything district-wise, I make sure I start with a district person. So I want to make sure I said that. I think that Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, Councilmember Bakhtiari would be the first steps to get all of us to do this. But you have to get that done in district.
Understood. We did try that. So at this point, all I can do is just keep speaking about it, and hopefully something will turn favorable until we run out of time. But I do appreciate your words. So thank you, and thank you for always being kind. I do appreciate that as well.
Councilmember Collins?
Hi, Ms. Bugs. Good to see you. Just
Thank you. Hi.
Thinking through, I know you come to, I know you come to the council meetings and the committee meetings and just kind of thinking through, so I'm going to be very careful, I guess, with my words to make sure that I'm not overstepping any boundaries in terms of legal, you know, legal pieces. But I do want to, you know, express that. I know a lot of times you come to a city council. A lot of the issues that you're bringing to us are those that are criminal. Sounds like they're criminal issues. So if there are any space where, you know, there are spaces that we can lean in, there, absolutely. But I do think you have, I mean, you have a number of civil actions that you can, based on what you're saying, that you can bring for, based on tort law, based on damages, things to that nature. Now, that is not our purview to lean in and be able to support. So I do want to be vocal, I do want to be vocal about that, even if exploring a short-term rental piece with your district member and at-large member. I think you have to be extreme. You have to understand that there may be a process of pushing and a grandfathering. So if you're trying to resolve the issue of these short-term rentals that are currently there, that may not be the solution that you, that may not be the solution. So I share that in terms of thinking about some of the other recourse that you have particularly. I mean, I think what we have to understand, one of the strongest laws that a person has is two things. They're over their person and over their property. It is a general thing that, so when you get to someone's property and demanding that on opposite ends, you have to understand that there are going to be some, you know, just as much as you speak out, there's going to be that response from the person or the property owner that you're speaking out against. So, you know, I think for us is to look at the public safety pieces and where we can lean in there to support.
Correct.
Now, I don't think there's going to be your solution of getting people out of there, stopping the SRTs, suing your HOA to recuperate funds, you know, in that space. So I do think there is a conversation and an understanding that we need to have as your city council representatives to support you as much as we can, but also have the reasonable expectation of where we really truly can.
Sure.
Because I do think it sends the message that we are the end-all, be-all answers to all of these pieces. And when you have, a lot of what you're saying is so guided and so strong, it's so guided and so locked in by state law. We as a local entity, that is not, that's, we, there's a line that we can't cross. But you can sue, like you seriously can.
Sure.
I don't know what that looks like. So I do want to just say that I think it is important for us to follow up in terms of the public safety concerns there. We'll connect with, you know, with Councilmen Bakhtiari. I know they've been very attuned to this. I know, again, I know it may not be the solutions that you want, but we'll get, we'll
Right, and I understand that. You know what, and it's not as much the matter of the solutions that I want. We want what's right. We're homeowners. We just want to come home in peace, and that's been stripped away. Although I do come to various committee meetings that you guys do have, and I do appreciate the opportunity, I try not to speak about other things outside of the topic of which we are in prayer review for right now. So this is a safety matter. And I do respect, you know, all of you and your time and your verbiage, and it's very helpful. And I'm not trying to cross, you know, try to cross-contaminate anything in reference to the topic at hand, and that's what's critical. So we are in trouble, and we do need help. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. That does conclude public comment. And I'm not assigned as a chair, apparently, so if you can remove Ms. Collins from the
Yes.
Oh, that's just
Speak, or Ms. Collins, if you can.
Got it. Thank you.
We will move, we're actually going to handle our legislation first, hopefully quickly, and then we'll move on to presentations. So moving on with consent agenda, resolutions, claims of favorable and unfavorable recommendations. I'll make a motion to approve all favorable claims. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
This is all the favorable claims. One moment. Vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The favorable claims have been approved.
Four yays, zero nays. Those claims are approved. I'm now making a motion to adverse all unfavorable claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Collins. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The unfavorable claims have been aversed.
Four yays, zero nays. Those claims are adverse. We'll move on to our ordinances for second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is item number 27, 2501648. Inordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to accept on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department a donation from the Atlanta Police Foundation of four Ford Crown Victorias, two Dodge Chargers, and two Ford Explorers valued at approximately $32,000.01 to be accepted in as a donation as of November 1st, 2025, for use as vehicles that are properly equipped to complete precision immobilization technique training on the emergency vehicle operations course at the Atlanta Public Safety Training Center and for other purposes.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Lewis. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable.
Four yays, zero nays. Item is favorable. Next item?
This brings us to item number 28, 2501649. Inordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city to enter into a lease agreement with the Retail Property Trust, a Massachusetts Business Trust for approximately 474 square feet of storage space, located at 3393 Peachtree Road, 2234B Storage Space Plaza Level, Lenox Mall, Atlanta, Georgia, for the Atlanta Police Department for a three-year term commencing retroactively on January 1st, 2024, and ending on December 31st, 2026, authorizing a lease rate not to exceed $1.01 per year, waiving Article 10, Section 2-1546, procurement code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, authorizing the expenditure to be charged to and paid from the fund and accounts listed herein and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The items are favorable. This brings us to item number 29.
Councilmember Lewis?
Is anybody here from the department to speak to the question? And I just wanted to know exactly what it was. Is this like the police precinct that's going to be at Lenox Mall? Or is this a separate storage space at Lenox Mall? Because I'm always thinking about Greenbrow Mall and trying to see if we can get what they got, so.
I'll assume it is an extension of the current police many precinct that is at Lenox Mall. But Mr. Overton can send that question over.
Yeah, we'll follow up and get back to you as soon as possible.
And let me know if it's at Greenbrow Mall, and if not, if we can match it so we can make sure that the southwest side gets what they get in bucket. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, there are no other questions. That brings us to item number 29. This is 2501659. Inordinance by Councilmember Andrea El Boone authorizing the mayor or his designee to waive Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 4 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances insofar as it shall be necessary to authorize the actions authorized hereby to enter into an Amendment Number 6 for Agreement FC-9423 Citywide Cleaning Close Services with Ask Construction and Home Inspection LLC on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Police Code Enforcement Section to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis for a term of one year effective from December 16th, 2025, through December 15th, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $1,400,000.01. All contract work we charge to and paid from accounted listed below and for other purposes.
I'll just point out that, you know, there's, Councilmember Lewis had a question for APD. This falls under APD, and there's no one here from that department to speak to these items. Oh, Council, then see you back there, Ms. Tally. You're hiding behind the chief. So I will start with my question, and I would, much like many of the other problems we're having, it's probably not on your department, but on another certain department that has continued to have issues as to why are we having to go to a month-to-month agreement on this contract instead of a new RFP?
So, good afternoon. Daphne Tally with the Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Contract. Actually, this is our second month-to-month. We have been working with the Department of Procurement for a few years now. We actually had a solicitation out earlier this year. We received one proposal, but that particular contract or that particular organization, they were not, let me put it this way, they didn't have the expertise that we needed for clean and close services. They were more of a maintenance organization. So we've been working with procurement ever since that particular solicitation was canceled to get it back out, hoping to have it out and have an executed contract before December, but that has not happened. And so we're asking to go month-to-month until we can execute that contract. We're hoping that we will have one in place by December 2026, but we wanted to request a year in case we run into any other issues.
And I would assume the current awardee was not interested in pursuing another contract with the city, or?
Well, they are, but actually, the current contractor that we're using wasn't found non-responsive. I'm not really sure if there were some forms that they did not submit.
Staple on the wrong side.
Yeah, correct, correct.
All right, well, I just wanted to get that on the record with the issues with the Department of Procurement. Thank you. But I'll make a motion to approve. Second by Councilmember Lewis.
Vote is open.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Thank you.
Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable.
All right, next item?
This brings us to item number 30, 2501661. Inordinance by Councilmember Andrea El Boone authorizing the city attorney or her designee to execute settlement statements on behalf of the City of Atlanta to resolve all claims against perfluorialalchyl and polyfluorialalchyl and perfluoroctane sulfonic acid manufacturers in ongoing litigation and/or national settlement discussions in the manner captioned by City of Atlanta v. 3M Company et al. and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Collins. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable.
Four yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Next item, resolutions?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. This brings us to our resolution, starting with item number 31, 25R4262. A resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta Department of Police employee Daniel Weaver, retired storekeeper senior under Section 3-505A of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Amos. Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open.
And just a question, just looking at this, I know it's somebody we're bringing back. I was thinking about somebody coming and entering into the workforce. Is there a reason, because this is not a specialty, is this position something that we can't hire for? Are we having an issue with hiring for this particular position? Just wondering why are we bringing someone back on this one?
Good afternoon, everyone. So Mr. Weaver is one that has experience. He's been there for over 30-plus years, and we can certainly use his expertise in that field. That's why we would like to bring him back in that capacity.
And this is, can, to make sure, storekeeper?
Yes, so Yes. So we have, in our property section, Mr. Weaver is responsible for bringing in all new equipment, everything that the city orders, orders, he keeps, basically logistic management over all of it.
And not singling Mr. Weaver out. I know I've had a lot of union folks who have come to me, labor folks come to me about us bringing back people, and now they're getting a retired, a pension check and a new check from the city. And so to look at, is this an hourly position typically?
Mr. Weaver is a civilian employee. He's not sworn, so that would be a totally different category. And so, as you know, we don't want to use a lot of our sworn personnel to do things like that, so we would really like to utilize the civilian capacity of being able to, to do things as such.
So, so this is a, a position that this storekeeper, that is open, and is it, we can't fill him, or we want to just bring him back in particular?
Well, I'm sure there would be a, a certain learning curve that we, anybody that we bought in, that we would have to train to get up to speed to where Mr. Weaver once was.
And this is a five-hundred-and-twenty business days to do this?
Yes.
To train someone up, are you going to take three years?
Well, I'm sure, sometimes, as we all know, you don't know what you don't know until you get into those certain positions. So I'm certain that, you know, yes, the request is to have Mr. Weaver come back. However, we know that those roles can be filled, but we do expect a learning curve to be there.
Because I'm looking at the job salaries, extra help, I know some positions are a little different, but thank, I voted for this, I voted for this. We do this all the time. A lot of people are coming to us for this, and for this to be a civilian position means that anybody in the city could get this. And so a person now is getting a pension and a new check, when a person, that's a position that we can fill. But thank you again, I did vote for this.
I don't believe we announced the vote, but it was four yays, zero nays, and that item was favorable. Next item?
Number thirty-two through thirty-eight, together as a block?
Please.
All right, starting with item number thirty-two, twenty-five R four-two-six-three, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta, in the case of Shine Investments Incorporated v. City of Atlanta et al., civil action file number two thousand and twenty-three, C V three-eight-two-two-eight-five, pending in the Superior Court of Fulton County, in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. Item number thirty-three, twenty-five R four-two-six-four, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the matter of Darrell Wayne Johnson and Bridges Stinson v. City of Atlanta, civil action file number two-three E V zero-zero-three-nine-five-two, pending before the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. Item number thirty-four, twenty-five R four-two-six-five, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant City of Atlanta, in the case of Kiara Anderson v. City of Atlanta, civil action file number two-four E V zero-zero-three-zero-six-one, pending in the State Court in Fulton County, in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. Item number thirty-five, twenty-five R four-two-six-six, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant City of Atlanta in the case of Antonia Laster v. City of Atlanta, civil action file number two-four E V zero-zero-five-nine-eight-nine, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. Item number thirty-six, twenty-five R four-two-six-seven, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta, in the case of Paul Falcone v. City of Atlanta, civil action file number two-five E V zero-zero-five-three-five-seven, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. Item number thirty-seven, twenty-five R four-two-eight, I'm sorry, four-two-six-eight, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta, in the case of Rodrigo Medina Colorado v. City of Atlanta, civil action file number two-five E V zero-zero-zero-four-seven-three, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of forty thousand dollars and zero cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes. And item number thirty-eight, twenty-five R four-two-six-nine, a resolution by the Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorizing the settlement of all claims against defendant City of Atlanta, in the case of State Farm Automobile Insurance S. Sabro G. of Char, of Charay Spalding v. City of Atlanta, civil action file number two-five E V zero-zero-six-seven-zero-one, pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of six thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein, and for other purposes.
Make a motion to approve those items. Is there a second? Second, my councilmember Collins, please prepare the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays, the items are favorable.
Four yays, zero nays, those items are favorable. I do not believe we have any items coming upheld.
No, sir.
All right, so that will bring us back to our presentations. First up, we'll have Atlanta Police Department Crime Statistics Report. DC Span?
Good afternoon again, everyone.
Afternoon.
When we look at the crime trends for our last seven days, it looks, it appears that we are down in, in all of our categories, with the exception of rape, and we do see an increase in our shoplifting. We do have different details that we do to address these. Don't forget with ag assault, this number looks like an increase, when in fact, there are several people inside of a residence, when, if somebody chooses to shoot at a dwelling, then we have to count those individuals inside of those structures as victims as well. And then shoplifting, we do see an increase, just based on a lot of our convenience stores in the area. A lot of our stores, as we know, don't have thresholds, and we do report those as such. I do want to highlight a couple of great wins that APD had. So last week, Zone Six, in tandem with our federal partners, were able to recover four hundred twenty kilos of crystal meth at a location on Custer Avenue. Just to put some context to it, this is like ten thousand five hundred dollars per kilo. So this is four-point-four billion dollars worth of drugs, drugs that won't be in our communities and affecting those who we serve on a daily basis. Councilmember Collins, you oftentimes ask about our details for the holiday. We have begun that. As of November twenty-first, all of our administrative officers are now in uniform, and we have deployed them to various details, and we are working in partnership with a lot of our retailers to address some of the concerns that we will have around shoplifting. And then, just to bring you up to speed on our diversions, we have reached a thousand twenty-five diversions year-to-date. And that is all I have, unless someone has questions.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Questions, colleagues? Thank you so much.
All right, happy Thanksgiving to you all.
We'll let you get back to work. Next up is the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department Quarterly Update. Chief Smith?
Good afternoon, everyone. Rod Smith, Fire Chief for Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. Good afternoon, Vice Chairman Hillis, Councilmember Amos, Councilmember Collins. My pleasure to be here presenting today, on behalf of the men and women of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. If you look to my right, you will see the leadership team of Atlanta Fire Rescue. Just to reiterate our commitment to the City of Atlanta and the services that we provide. The Atlanta Fire Rescue Department, our goals and objectives are always to ensure that we are providing the safest work environment for our employees, as well as meeting all of the hiring and recruiting needs for AFRD, while continuously focusing on the initiatives, enhancements, and accomplishments of our, our members. We will continue to work with the council members to review and monitor AFRD's emergency services that we provide, as well as regularly review the conditions and needs of our fleet, as well as our facilities, assuring that we maintain competitive compensation for all employees for the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department. Next, you will see the service metrics for Atlanta Fire Rescue. We start with calls for service. Calls for service represents all calls that come into E nine-one-one that are given to Atlanta Fire Rescue. These calls can, at times, be duplicate calls, as well as they can be non-emergency or non-nine-one-one calls. So you will see, these numbers will always be larger, because these are the calls that hit the nine-one-one queue. But if you look at these numbers, you will see, we focus on breaking it down between downtown, as well as our aviation division, which services Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. Three areas of focus for each category, we look at EMS, which is up for downtown, two-point-one-five percent. Our fire calls downtown are down a point-nine percent, and our other calls, and we will get into what other represents as we dig a little deeper in our, our, our metrics. At the airport, we look at ARF calls, or aircraft rescue firefighting calls. Those calls can be anything from standby calls for, to engine fires, or tires blowing out, or it can be an actual fire. So that call is designated as an ARF call in our world. And so you will see those calls are up twenty-one percent at the airport. Our EMS calls are down at the airport, seven-point-eight percent. We have no way of determining what those EMS calls can and will be, but we want to make sure that Atlanta Fire Rescue is prepared to respond to those calls. As well as you will see, there again, the other category, and we will go into detail on that, is down roughly twenty-five percent. So what we like to do when we measure our performance is, we like to focus on situations found. We found situation files to be the most accurate reports that we can get from our members, because they are done by the responding officers, who have an inherent responsibility to complete an accurate incident report, giving us the details, not just what was provided over the phone in haste or in emergency, but after they terminate the incident, they have an opportunity to reflect on the call they just ran, and identify the situation found, giving us a more accurate detail of what call we actually ran in that area. My apologies to you upfront, there were some typos that were in the numbers, as it relates to the situations found downtown. I will make sure that the latest update is provided to this, to this committee. However, I will give you the numbers for EMS year-to-date. It should be thirteen thousand five hundred seventy-six. FY twenty-five, first quarter should be seven thousand, it is correct, seven thousand nine ninety-five. The next correction will be structure fires. The number of structure fires year-to-date should be ninety-five, instead of one seventy-seven. And year-to-date, excuse me, fiscal year-quarter, one should be a total of fifty-nine, and fiscal year-twenty-six, quarter one should be a total of sixty, which represents a one-point-seven percent increase in structure fires. However, you can see that the lion's share of our calls still remain EMS calls, as well as other service calls for downtown, as well as the airport. So when we dig into EMS calls, which represents, as I stated, the largest portion of our calls, you will see the breakdown for downtown, you will see overall that there was a nine-point-four percent increase in EMS calls. Those calls are focused around primarily ALS, or advanced life services that we provide to the citizens of Atlanta, with a category of with or without a motor vehicle. And so we try to make sure that we split those up to ensure that we know if it happened in an auto accident or not. And you will see that number is up fifty-one-point-four percent of, of regular, as we refer to EMS calls. The MVAs are up twenty-one percent, and you will see a category here that represents motor vehicles versus pedestrians. That group is up sixteen-point-five percent. When we look at the other calls, we look at the non-emergent, the non-emergent calls, those calls that are medically related but are not emergencies, those calls are down, as well as the non-structure fire calls are down fifteen-point-seven percent, and good intent calls. And we accredit that to the excellent services that are provided by E nine-one-one, as they filter through the calls, to ensure that we manage our resources properly, and make sure that Atlanta Fire is not needed on the scene. Next, we focus in on what is going on at our airport. And so when we look at the airport, you will see that the call volume at the airport is down overall in EMS, ten-point-seven percent, with a reduction in our regular EMS calls, or the ones I mentioned before of motor vehicle accidents with no injuries. And so we do have accidents, as we see the traffic and hustle and bustle at the airport, but those calls are down twelve-point-seven percent. And so we attribute that to the team working at the airport, creating a safer traffic pattern, and making sure that APD is in the space they need to be in managing those incidents. As well as you will see, other service calls are up, which represent the undetermined calls and the good intent calls. There's a conversation now, and we're trying to get some feedback, I'm apologizing because we don't have it, with the E nine-one-one center at the airport, to identify the situation with undetermined calls and good intent calls. And so we will make sure we get that information to you. Next, you will see the activity in our Community Risk Reduction section that is specific to downtown. You will see that there is a twelve-point-five percent increase in activities. We attribute that to filling the vacancies for our code enforcement or our inspectors, as well as training our staff, recently having members to complete the training necessary to go out and assist in those numbers. And so we anticipate those numbers to continue to increase. Next, you will see the inspection sections numbers from the aviation section for Atlanta Fire Rescue. And you will see that those numbers are up for facility inspection, three-point-six percent, as well as you will see the fueling operations, which make us FAA compliant, are up eight-point-two percent. The facility inspections, we attribute that to staffing and hiring there again, as well as we attribute the fueling operations increases to flight operations, and summer month activity travels during the first quarter. Next, we talk about the fleet of Atlanta Fire Rescue, and there have been questions about what the orders are, what we have, what we don't have, and what we are anticipating getting sold. To clarify that, I wanted to share with you that since the beginning of this fiscal year, we've received one engine that is assigned to the airport, we've received one tiller truck that went to Station eleven, we have one hybrid truck that is now out at the shop, being accepted by the city, we've received seven command vehicles, as well as three EMS supervisors' vehicles for Atlanta Fire Rescue. In production right now with KME, we have five engines that we anticipate to receive in May of twenty-six. We have one TDA, or tiller drone aerial, that we anticipate we will get in July of twenty-six. And we have an additional hybrid truck that has been ordered, that we are, should be getting before the end of this year. What we have on order, we have on order eight engines, which we have been given a target date of twelve-twenty-seven. We have three TDAs, excuse me, a total of four TDAs, one assigned to the airport, the three for downtown, we have a target date of twelve-twenty-seven, and the one for the airport, we have a target of eleven-twenty-six. Our ask for this fiscal year is six engines, two TDAs, and one replacement for our squad vehicle. Next, we dive into facility enhancements, and I want to thank each of you for your support of Atlanta Fire Rescue and the administration, as we move forward with replacing much-needed fire stations in the City of Atlanta. We've, we've got a lot done, but there's still a lot of work to do. So I thank you in advance for your support with Atlanta Fire Rescue. You can see here where we have some renovations that are going on, Station thirty-four, as well as we have some real estate here in City Hall, that will be used. well as we have some real estate here in City Hall that will be utilized by Community Risk Reduction. We're working through that with Dean to make that available. Under construction, we have Station twenty six and Station thirty under construction, and we anticipate those stations being completed end of next year. We are in the early stages of Station twenty five, is that it was recently demolished and moved off the property. And so we've been given a target of twenty twenty seven for it, and we're working through Station thirty one as well as the upcoming Buckhead Fire and EMS station. And so we're still in negotiation processes for that station, but it is forthcoming. You will see renovations ongoing right now for, excuse me, renovations that have been completed. Fire Station fifteen on Tenth Street. You will see Station twenty one in Buckhead, Station fourteen, which is on Lee Street, and Station one on Elliott Street. All of those projects have been completed. I want to thank the council members that who have supported us through these renovations, and you to be getting a full comprehensive report of the funds that you have donated to Atlanta Fire Rescue out of your coffers to help us with those fire stations. You will be getting a detailed report and a presentation here very shortly on that. Next, we share the numbers for our recruiting and hiring efforts for Atlanta Fire Rescue during this first quarter of FY twenty six. And what we can tell you is that we have hired of the about fourteen hundred applications we have received, we have hired thirty one firefighters. We currently have one hundred and four recruits, and I'm happy to share with you that our next graduation will be in January, January the twentieth, where we will have twenty five additional recruits coming out of training. And thereafter, our next graduation will be March, the next one will be August, and the next one will be December. So as you can see, we are actively hiring and maintaining the numbers in Atlanta Fire Rescue. And so you will see that our vacancy rates continue to diminish. We will continue to hire red shirts. We will continue to refine our hiring process and working with the administration to make sure that we can report accurately the effectiveness of those hiring efforts. Here you will see a breakdown of sworn and civilian activity as it relates to hiring or employment with Atlanta Fire Rescue. As I shared, we've hired thirty one recruits. We've retired eight members. We've terminated one. We had one resignation. There's been very little movement in the civilian space as we have not hired nor retired anyone during this period. We had one termination. We had three resignations, and unfortunately, we lost a long term employee who is now deceased, and that was a dedicated member of Atlanta Fire Rescue. On this slide, you will see some of the numerous activities as I constantly share with you. Our goal is to make sure that the community knows who we are before the red lights go on. And so being a good steward of the community means that you know your neighbors and you get out and spend time with them. And so you will see Atlanta Fire Rescue out in the community, participating in events from midnight basketball to us speaking at NPUs, recruit graduation, youth outreach, Year of the Youth, helping seniors and going to food drives, you name it, we're there. And just a tribute to the men and women that are answering the calls and spending their times in the communities when there are no emergencies going on. And that concludes my presentation, and we will open the floor now for questions if you have any for me, and we will see if we can provide the best answer we can for you.
Thank you, Chief. I'll start with a few questions. So you did mention that the next order that'll be going through as far as apparatus, you said six engines and two TDAs?
Two TDAs and one squad truck is the request.
And what, I know that's the, the next order, but what is kind of the status of that? Is that been, was that in the FY twenty six budget, or is that gonna be, are those gonna be bought with bonds, or?
I don't know how they're gonna be purchased. I do know that the vehicle purchases historically have never been a part of the fire department annual budget. It's always been a capital purchase. That's a conversation that we will have to have further with the CFO to determine how they will be funded.
Well, I'll certainly ask that tomorrow on FEC. And then on facilities, what is the, I guess, the holdup other than a little more specifics about the budget approval for the, the bay doors? Was, was that also on the FY twenty six budget, or?
Yeah, it was tied into a contract that we had, and so that project is an ongoing project. Now, it's a slow kickstart back to that project once the budget money got free, but we're gonna anticipate we're gonna move with that one here shortly.
Okay. And then just, I'll see what is in progress, but what I've asked for a few times is would love to see, you know, as we know, the, some probably opportunity for bonds are coming up in another year to two years. So just kind of a five or even ten year plan as far as, you know, what are the next stations that are up? I know I have at least one that's in pretty, pretty bad condition and, you know, some others that are pretty old, just in my district, so. So I would like to see maybe a five or ten year plan as to the priority, and I know that can change depending on what happens at certain stations, but would like to see an updated one of those, when you can provide one.
Sure, happy to provide that for you.
And then also same for, you know, I appreciate the details on the next order, but kind of the same, a plan for the fleet purchases moving forward, given it's taking so long for these to, to show up from the manufacturer.
Gotcha. So we also have a fleet replacement plan that has, that is in place, and I'll make sure you get a copy of that as well.
All right, much appreciated, Chief. Colleagues, any questions? All right, thanks so much, Chief.
Thank you. You guys have a wonderful holiday.
You as well. Chief Dancy, Atlanta Department of Corrections quarterly update?
Good afternoon, Vice Chair and other distinguished council members. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Elder Dancy, Chief of Corrections for the City of Atlanta, and I will be providing the first quarter FY twenty six update. We always like to start with our vision and mission statement, which keep us focused on our purpose and the individuals who depend on us. Our vision statement is our vision statement is to protect the public while striving for excellence through exemplary customer service and promoting community involvement. And our mission statement is to provide a safe and secure correctional environment, enhance public safety through partnerships with the community and law enforcement. And here are a few partnerships we'd like to showcase. First, Someone Cares Atlanta. This is a nonprofit, community based organization that educates and empowers individuals living with HIV AIDS and other health disparities to achieve better outcome. We are thankful to Someone Cares and our healthcare team for ongoing service impact. As you can see, we provided services to fifty six detainees during the first quarter. And the emergency management, this is a continued partnerships, we, partnership we have with the Mayor's Office of Emergency Preparedness. One good example of this is a couple of weeks ago during the Warment Center activations, activation at two centers, we provided meals and other services during that time. Second Chance Partnership, this is a partnership we have with the Georgia Department of Corrections, where we continue to assist with the reentry process. In the next slide, you'll see where we partnered with APD and their, with their mounted patrol unit to engage the City View Scholars Academy. And then in the next one, you see where we have our ongoing relationship with the Emory Mental Health Department. Thanks to Grady Psych, Grady and Emory psychiatric fellows, they are still providing services for our detainees twice a week. Thanks there, pictured there to Dr. Sims, our employee, Ms. Cross, and Dr. Domeno Hans, and Grady psychiatrist, Dr. Rayhan. They were able to visit a hundred and forty four detainees during the first quarter. Now, next slide is, involves detainee transportation. Thanks to these collaborations, our detainees have access to essential, no cost transportation in partnership with Common Courtesy and the Office of Sustainability. Our team was able to provide a hundred and fourteen rides to our detainees. And we also distributed a hundred and seventy modder, modder carts to the detainees during this first quarter. Our employment and attrition numbers, as you can see, July through September, the numbers are holding steady consistently with about, with July, one hundred and forty seven sworn, sixty three civilian, August, one forty five sworn, sixty four civilians, and September, a hundred and forty two sworn and sixty four civilians. See a slight uptick, bottom left bar graph there with sworn attrition. But other than that, everything has been pretty consistent, and we'll expect those numbers to continue to increase as we move towards the end of the year, and more of our employees are at the retirement stage. The next slide involves training. Our training, these trainings actually reflect the dedication to developing and investing in our team members and building on our overall readiness. I won't go through all of them, but as you see there, on the right, the, we were able to provide CPR training for all of our employees as well as supervisors training. So thanks to the law enforcement agencies that support the staff development enhancement and enhance our operational readiness. And featured in this image are our, two of our employees, Officer Bernard there on the left and Sergeant Fleellen in the middle. We want to thank APD for allowing our staff to participate in the Certified General Instructor Training. These two instructors, with this achievement, not only reflects their dedication to professional development, but also enhances our department's ability to deliver high quality in-house training. And the next slide involve our featured facing, our front facing security technology advancement. As you could see, the technological upgrades with our iLobby tracking system, which will track everyone that's entering ACDC at, at our front entrance, and body X-ray scanners. We have two scanners, one is positioned at our main entrance, and the other one is in our intake area, which will play a critical role in enhancing security and operational efficiency. Want to thank this body as well as the Mayor's, Mayor's administration for supporting the purchase of these items. We definitely feel that every staff member, every visitor, and every detainee deserves a safe place. Virtual Court continues to function effectively through the strong partnership that we have with municipal court. As you can see, the numbers there from the first quarter FY twenty four through twenty five, the only spike you see is FY twenty four to twenty five, and we attribute that to the modification of the bond process, the signature bond process. The numbers there on the right are for this quarter, July, August, and September, which combined for our fiscal year numbers of two twenty eight eleven. And this is our in court statistics. You see a slight, the numbers went down slightly. In court numbers for last year, this quarter, in cash bond was seventy six percent, twenty four versus in court numbers in cash this year, sixty one percent and thirty nine. That's attributed to a malfunction that we had that took place for a few weeks that has since been corrected. So you should see those online numbers keep trending upwards in our next report. ACDC and Fulton total bookings and average daily population overall, the data is, is essentially unchanged from our last quarter with just a minimal increase. The orange represents ACDC, and the yellow numbers represent Fulton County. As you can see, Fulton had an uptick in their average daily population from last quarter of about a little over a hundred detainees. However, that has been consistent for the last four to five months, and our average daily population currently is one oh seven compared to one eleven last year. And these are our top fifteen charges at ACDC. These rankings include every offense tied to an arrest, even lesser included offenses. So minor violations will appear alongside more serious violations. Many are state traffic charges where municipal court has concurrent jurisdiction. The next slide is a slide this body asked us to include in our presentation, the demographics at ACDC and Fulton County, which includes gender, race, average age, and average length of stay. This is a comparison from first quarter FY twenty five and first quarter FY twenty six, and the numbers are pretty consistent to, to our last presentation. And then the next slide is our, the Atlanta DOC and Fulton County interagency agreement. We, Fulton detainees Services and our joint coordination continues as usual with no notable shifts during this quarter. As you can see, as of November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, Fulton County had four hundred and fifty six detainees, three hundred and twenty two females, a hundred and thirty four males. And as of today, when we check, we have four hundred and sixty five detainees. So those numbers are consistently in the mid four hundreds for Fulton County. And the next slide is our digression session. We continue to provide services that helps our detainees navigate the stresses of incarceration. The digression, digression section is an initiative started by our inmate service unit. Picture there is Ms. Cade, who's provided emotional release of stress due to incarceration. Detainees are encouraged to creatively express feelings through art. Thanks to Ms. Cade and Dr. Battle. And National Night Out, our team was glad to show up and support our partners and the community during National Night Out. As you can see, these photos shows our team involvement throughout the city as we partner with APD and Atlanta Fire Rescue. And of course, we, our work extends beyond our facility as we partner with the community on events that support safety and opportunity for all. These are events that we participated in with Councilmember Bone in District Ten on a food drive, Councilmember Lewis Peace Walk food drive at Avon Avenue, and Councilmember Bond food drive at Greater Piney Grove Baptist Church. And with this event, we participated in the nine eleven blue mask in partnership with APD and Atlanta Fire Rescue. We want to thank Cathedral of Christ the King for hosting this annual event. And our team, our team continues to engage the City View Scholars Academy, supporting the kids as a part of the Mayor's ongoing youth, Year of the Youth Initiative, thanks to Dr. Battle, Ms. Cade, and the office, the officers pictured there, Officer L. Pebblis, Investigator Hudge, and Ms. J. Matek for their participation. And finally, we are honored, we like to honor our recent retirees and thank them for their service and wish them all the best. Pictured there on the left, top left is Lieutenant Mikhail DeBerry. He spent thirty years with the department. Next to him is Lieutenant Michael McCarter, twenty six years, and bottom left Lieutenant Octavia Holloman, who spent thirty years with the Department of Corrections. And that's it. Vice Chair, that's gonna be, I'll conclude our presentation. Just want to thank you as we come on, come up to the end of the year, our last presentation for your support and this administration, the COO and the mayor. And I want to finally thank the men and women of the Department of Corrections for their ongoing commitment and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Dancy. Colleagues, questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do believe that concludes our reports and so forth the agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn. to adjourn. Thank you.